Alright, good evening everybody. Uh, this is the one school board meeting of the year where I actually called the meeting to order. Um, so like to call the meeting to order at seven oh five. And with the first item on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance, so please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It will reflect that all members are present for the exception of Jeff Redman, who is absent. The meeting was properly notified. The next item on the agenda is the election of board officers. So at this time, I'd like to call for nominations for school board officers for the upcoming year.
I move that we have a slate nomination.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to accept a slate nominees for officers. Uh, all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Wait, wait, oh, that's the motion is just for a slate, then we name?
If we accept that, we can do a slate nomination, then we can present slates.
Okay, so motion John, second.
David.
David. And you're calling for the vote?
Go ahead.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Here this time, I will entertain nominations for president, vice president, clerk, uh, and treasurer, correct?
Yes. I move the following slate Howard Kruski, president, Kirk Lexit, vice president, Scott Gross, treasurer, Jeff Redman, clerk.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, John, for a slate of Howard as president, Kirk as the vice president, Scott as treasurer, and Jeff as the clerk, and a second by David, is it correct?
Yeah.
His voice is deeper.
Trisha.
Alright, any other discussion? Call for a vote then, all those in favor of approving that slate indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, and this time then, I will turn it over to our president for the year.
Well, thank you all, appreciate your vote of confidence. Uh, with that, uh, do we have any public comment at this time? We have an opportunity to public comment.
No one said no.
Okay, hearing none, then we will move on to our next item on the agenda, which is uh, destination imagination presentation by air. Welcome. I might have you introduce yourselves. Don't be shy.
Lacy?
Oh yeah.
And Logan Steersum.
And I was, I'm Lacy's father, I was actually the coach of this team for the season.
Okay, if you'd like, you can tip that microphone down a little bit, there you go.
All about the I. What our challenge, what was our challenge? Our challenge was to design a structure that holds as much weight as possible and that has too, that has a too much opening. To create a skit, make a special effect for it, to make costumes and props.
Um, destination imagination was a very nice chance for us kids to learn, um, different things. Cooperation, teamwork. New stuff. We have a chance to meet new friends, to have fun, and we learn respect.
Our process, we broke down the problems, we broke down the problem, we made small groups, we test our structure and work together. And these are some of the pictures from, there's some from our state competition, and when we were building our big prop, the pizza truck.
Some more pictures from when we were at the state competition.
Are those weights on that picture?
Yes.
How much weight did your structure bear?
So what they haven't said yet, uh, they built, out of this challenge, they built a structure, um, using the materials Lacy has there. Um, their structure weighed forty-two point three grams at state, and it held a maximum weight of four hundred and sixty pounds. So with this competition, um, and with the I really in general, these kids were the ones that had to kind of come up with the structure, create the structure. Um, so they were the ones that designed it, uh, built it. They also created a skit that lasted over eight minutes, uh, we actually ran out of time at state. They had to kind of create, um, they had to come up with a creative way to test the structure by placing weights. So the idea they came up with was using the weights as pizza, hence the pizza truck kind of, that you see them creating, and then they, they placed the four hundred and sixty pounds on top of their testing structure, um, as part of the competition.
Lacy, can you tell everybody how many nights you guys actually worked after school for this?
Uh-uh, anybody was a lot.
I think I counted eighteen?
We had every Monday, and then we added in a few extras, um, and then after they qualified at regions to go to state, we added in a few more. Uh, one of the handicaps they had between regions and state was they only had two weeks where a lot of the other teams had a month or better. Uh, and they had to completely rebuild their structure, and then from that, they also came up with other ideas on how to make their presentation better.
So, I, I see all the weights on it, but tell us, what, what did that structure look like? I mean, what was, how did you make it?
We made, so we had the wire and we had it high, and then we had some others one, and we put it around like this.
And then we'd also had, we had crosses in between each of them. Because, um, when you're building like a bridge, they always are using triangles to help keep it steady and strong, so that the cars can actually try the process. So we were using common logic.
That's cool. Very cool.
And what was this piece about, it had to have a two inch opening in it?
It had a, um, so, on the, on the place where we had to put our structure so we could put the weights on, there was a hole about the size of the weight, and our structure had to be bigger than that, so. Well, it's that way that we picked up, it would be able, so the pole could be in the middle, and then we could put the weights on.
Oh, so you had to be able to fit your structure into that open?
So those weights could stack on top.
Yeah, well, you don't see in that picture, there's actually a pole that's connected at the bottom of the base structure that goes all the way up through, and they had to stop putting weight on when they ran out of poles, so four hundred and fifty plus a ten pound pressure plate was the maximum amount of weights they could put on the pole before they ran out of room.
And it still withstood that.
Yep.
And what did you use to join the pieces of wood together?
We used hot glue and some Gorilla Glue.
We actually, like, uh, mixed it together to create like a super weird but strong, um, variation of food. You can really use the idea yourself.
So how many teams competed at the state level then?
Uh...
There were twenty at, about twenty at the elementary level, um, and they took sixteenth out of the twenty teams. Um, at regional, I think there were eight, and they took second at regionals, which is what qualified them to go to state.
Really cool. How big was, how big was your team, was it the three of you or were there more?
No, there were more.
There was seven of us.
There was seven. Yeah, there was at the beginning, seven. Not all of them actually came to state or regionals, and/or regionals.
That was one of the other challenges this team had to overcome, kind of as a group. Um, the original regional competition was set up on that Saturday that we were getting that icy rainstorm, so they canceled it and moved it, which meant two of their team members couldn't make it. Um, so after that, these guys had to kind of come up, figure out how to modify their script, so they could act it out with less people because they were planning on having seven originally. Um, and then when we qualified for state, there were additionally another two people, different people, that couldn't go to state, so they had to re-modify this skit kind of in between again, and take on different roles each time.
By the way, if you want, uh, Rob S., just in case his numbers were wrong for the other people, um, so, have any of you seen the gym in remake, the big huge one? If you have, basically imagine that for nothing but kids and a few adult scouts. That's basically what it was like.
That will cause you to twitch.
So did you have fun in the competition?
Yes. Even if you don't win, the most important thing to know is to have fun.
That's right, absolutely.
Because if, because even if you don't win one, you still technically win if you enjoy it.
Thank you very much.
Excellent.
Thank you, should be proud of your work.
Thanks guys.
Congratulations.
Look forward to seeing presentations in the future, so. Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, Lacy.
Glad you had fun.
Oh, uh, so just, Scott just mentioned that there were only three teams in the state that got that much weight on their structure.
Wow. It was actually the time limit that caught them. The weight wise, they were the, one of the top contenders.
But wasn't for the day time?
But you have to do it within the skit time?
Yeah, so the way the competition for the testing on the structure works, it was actually any kind of an algorithm. It, it was the amount of weight you put on and took off in the eight minutes allotted. Uh, so they put on the four hundred and sixty and got ninety back off before they ran out of time, so their structure got credit for five hundred and fifty pounds on forty-two grams.
And if, if you had the full team, would they have gotten more, was that part of the time limit, um, problem or, or not necessarily?
Um, you know, I think, so, my take on it, uh, like I said, we had the two weeks in between. When we went to regions, we built pretty much the same structure, but they only put a hundred and sixty pounds on it because we didn't have a whole lot of time to test. Uh, when we went to state, they kind of knew they had to up their game a little bit, so they changed their skit, um, which slowed us down a little bit, and then we put on a lot more weight, which slowed us down a little bit. Um, so kind of between the two of those, that's, I think, what hurt us. If we would've had a little more time to practice in between, I think they wouldn't have had it, because they had a really good skit compared to a lot of the other teams. A lot of other teams didn't have that, uh, correlation between the pizza and the weight testing, they just kind of had somebody off on the side putting weight on and taking it off, where they really incorporated it with their skit, uh, which was one of the grading components.
First year team or second year team?
Uh, this was an elementary first year team.
Yeah, so this is, this is part of that learning, and now you have new strategy for next year, right?
Yep.
Way to go. That's hard.
One thing that really ate up time was setting it up, and like, um, I'm not sure which one of you who said, but like you said, not having all the teammates slowed us down because we didn't have that many people to help set up things, which was long.
So one of the pictures we didn't take that'll pass around from, um, Leah's mom here, um, is the competition. So like I said, there were twenty teams at the elementary level in this competition, but there was elementary, middle school, and high school, and, uh, you know, and
Several categories, yeah, I don't know what they call that there.
So that's kind of a picture of the main auditorium with all the teams there that were competing in all the different competitions and.
That's full house.
Yeah, it is.
Was it the RESH Center or?
Yeah, yeah, uh, no, not the RESH, not the arena, the, it was a basketball court.
At the UW?
Yeah, yep, they went to the, yeah, UW campus there.
That's a full house.
Yeah, there were a lot of people there, and it was quite amazing to see all the different teams and competitions and to just see kind of what these kids are able to handle with.
Well, you should be proud of your accomplishments and, uh, look forward to your competitions in the future, so. They have forty-two, forty-two gram structure hold four hundred and some pounds, uh, that boggled my mind.
And, and personally, Chris, um, I can't thank you and all the parents enough for volunteering. And many nights, Chris was coming in hot, he was coming in from work, and those kids were up waiting for him, and he never knew what was waiting for him, but, uh, I appreciate the time you guys put in, it was amazing.
Thank you.
Good stuff.
Thank you, good job.
Thanks for sure.
Okay, moving on to the next item, uh, comments from, uh, board members and superintendent. We'll start with the comprehensive communication plan update, so.
Uh, yeah, so we met again today, um, the newsletter is in process, so they were out to take the pictures, uh, uh, Kitter Media, and, um, the writers are writing, and, uh, the admin team had given them a whole host of topics, so the, uh, first draft will be coming to us this week for us to approve, and we'll proof it as a committee and admin team. Um, that's in process. Um, coming up, we had some other discussion, we'd still like to, um, talk about a monthly, um, more like a postcard around, uh, good things happening, things to be looking for, for example, we just had that, uh, Money City or Mad Money or whatever, and there's a great opportunity to do a lot of volunteering at that, and that would've been an ideal thing to have on this type of a postcard, so we're gonna keep that stimulated, and then as, uh, wage and benefits goes through their work, if there's other needs for communication around those pieces, we'll, we'll certainly start linking up on that, so. Uh, good meeting, we are committed to work in June, we asked, um, Tim to do some work with, um, Kitter, get the metrics back, we know what the, um, effectiveness, early numbers and all that are, so that we can decide if this something will pursue further. Any, uh, trash?
Okay, well, thank you, and thank you for the hard work, and I look forward to the newsletter, so. Okay, uh, next is a report on a staff appreciation breakfast on the eighth. If anybody else was able to attend any, I, I made it to the elementary school, it was the only school I was able to attend. It was good to, to talk to a lot of the staff there. They appreciated the, the, uh, bagels and the fruit and the yogurt in the morning. I guess I go there and, uh, amazed at all the new faces, so. But, uh, it's still some of the old timers there, it's, it's interesting to talk to them and see not only how they're doing, but how their kids are doing, and how their families growing up, and, so. It was a good event, I think everybody appreciated it, and, uh, I guess I haven't heard anything from the other buildings, but, uh, it went well over in the, the, uh, staff lounge over in the, uh, elementary school, so it was pretty much appreciated, so.
It was awesome for us, I mean, I, I don't know who ordered, but we had, we had three mornings of, of food, there was plenty there, it was, yogurt was, yeah, it was good, staff, if you want to get to staff, it's through their, their belly, for sure, so it was good. And it, you know, the, the best part about it is, in those mornings, it just forces staff to go to lounge and to see them chat and eat, and it's, it's, it's good, it, it's a great opportunity and much appreciated for sure.
Anything else on the breakfast, huh? As, uh, we'll go on to the next item, which is, uh, report on our SCC staff recognition retirement event, uh, this last Friday, so. Who wants to go first?
Uh, I guess I could start, we, uh, we had three retirees this, this year, Pam Donald, Tony DeSalvo, and Megan Johnson. Uh, Megan, uh, was the only one in attendance, uh, so we did the trivia game, which is always a lot of fun, you learn a lot about them, as you never would have otherwise, uh, um, always fun, and then, um, we, uh, did our years of service awards, five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, uh, this year, and, and a thirty. Yep, Tony was at thirty. And then, uh, we had our six perfect attendance winners, um, and nine nearly perfect attendants, which is one day, that's one day. And then, um, Howard and John and I had some words, and then, at the end, we got to enjoy some really, uh, nice hors d'oeuvres, and, uh, some, some, um, tea and lemonade and water, uh, so, um, the, the, by Panther Catering, so Courtney Hawkins, Panther Catering did a great job. Some spicy meatballs and some wonderful, I think, the fruit cups, the mini little fruit pies were probably the, I think, the most, uh, enjoyed hors d'oeuvre of all. Um, what were some of the other, oh, some veggies in the cup, and then, uh, half a dozen different desserts. Yeah. It was good, it was a good Friday, uh, which is the end of our professional development day, our last professional development day of the year.
Uh, I thought it, I thought it went well, I think that the message is, tried to send a positive message to the staff. I don't know, some of them, uh, realized how well we were doing, that our, uh, ratings academically in the state, getting recognition both in the state and in the, in the nation now. I don't know if anybody's seen the results of the, the high school ratings. Uh, it's, uh, US News and World Report, uh, we're now in the top fifteen percent of the nation. I think, uh, like twenty-six hundred and something out of, you know, seventeen, over seventeen thousand schools. The state of Wisconsin, we're now, I think, number seventy-six, whereas two years ago, we were like two hundred and thirty-one, so. We're moving up the ladder and we're moving up pretty quickly, so, that's due to the hard work of our staff, so. Now, we needed them to recognize that, uh, those things don't go unnoticed, so, I think the community should be proud of them, they should be proud of themselves. Job well done, so. John, comments?
Uh, nothing that hasn't been already stated, it's a great event, and I love having the opportunity to go to it each year.
Okay. It was a fun, it was a fun event for everyone. Were there any other, uh, comments from board members on any other issues? Hearing none, uh, we'll move on to the next item, which is, uh, the update, um, from our SCC community education.
I'd like to all to be brief, um, our classes have all been going, Mr. Gilhousen has, uh, have a few classes, uh, he's come to his line class, um, which he's separating, probably, right now, and having some results. Um, also, I wrote a grant to Amory Foundation, it got five hundred dollars, as you know, I continue to write grants so that my kids start unicycle. I could tell them that when they go across that gym, that'll be their unicycle, um, so it's quite a motivation. Um, we're doing community outreach always, we were the entertainment for the Pope Pierce Sanctuary County Foster Care Summit in New Richmond. I brought about fourteen, fifteen kids, the unicycles juggled and balloons for the kids that were there, well, the parents were being encouraged to get more foster care parents. There's a great need for foster care. We did Saint Patrick's Day Parade, I had twenty-six kids there, and they gave, uh, the Shamrock Park gave seven, seventy-five dollars to go to our unicycles. We're in the Roberts Parade, Baldwin, Hammond, and Richmond parades. The Baldwin Parade has supplied us with a Segway and something called a nine pot, they're motorized things. And I have two of my unicycle kids that are going to ride them, they practice them tonight, and juggle on them through the entire parade. So, and tonight, I'm gonna showcase a new, uh, student that learned unicycle. Normally, we ask that they don't start to learn in second grade, and Miller, she can come up here, Miller Griga, um, is in kindergarten, and she was sure she wanted to take unicycle and not to strip any of the rules. So she did, and she probably went to four, five classes maybe, she started on a real s- small one we have for shorter kids, on eighteen inch wheel, and, uh, went across the gym, took that one home, and then last week, we had some new unicycles, and we moved her up to a twenty inch, which is the regular sized unicycle. And when they get their unicycle, they get to decorate them, so, that, that when they're at class, they know which one's theirs, so they're not being shared. So she's gonna give you a little demonstration, she's the youngest kid I've ever taught unicycle. Uh, most time, we like them in second grade because they're, have a little more core strength and can focus, not this one. She's good, so. I, I don't know, I'm gonna have to. We have, and there that nice, um, locker room that used to be a shower that had, it was usually sixty-five to seventy unicycles hanging in the whole time, I have six drafts, um, I have two altimates, and, um, it's a good thing, so.
How many, how many years now with unicycling?
Ten solid years, yeah, I call it eleven, so.
With unicycling? That was a, that was an original course year one, wasn't it?
Yeah, Tony O'Brien, her family, in the cycle chapter that started, and, um, and we got a few donated from her, and then, uh, we've, um, we used to charge the people for the unicycles, but as we've got along, I have a lot of, maybe, um, underprivileged children that, um, having to be able to know they don't have to pay mom and dad that live in different towns to buy them a cycle. That they'll have it, it's a big motivation, it used to take ten, twelve weeks to teach a kid unicycle, it's now four, five. Because they got that unicycle, they get to take it home. And they leave them there during the school year, if they want to, now if they got nice, they usually take them home. It's empowering, it's pretty cool.
Do you know how many kids have gone through unicycling over all those years?
No. Lots.
I just, I, you know, uh, that's the kind of story that you want to, uh, talk to, uh, Jason up at, uh, is it Jason or Justin up at New Richmond News? We should do a ten year.
Jordan Willie?
Jordan, thank you.
Yeah, and lots of schools calling me and asking me to start programs in their schools, but, you know, it's just, started, I'm not doing it. And I do have, um, four from New Richmond right now, I have six from Hudson, I have a couple from River Falls that come over here and, and join us in parade, but we still are public safety percent of unicycles.
There's, there's just so much good about it, a lot, and, uh, it, it'd be wonderful to see, especially with the great season coming up, that people know what they're looking at. Yeah, that'd be awesome.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for demonstrating.
Great job, Bill. That's like a, that's like a room further than I can go.
You still are, right?
It's true.
And even at Wisconsin Education News, statewide, I mean, that's, that's.
I think we got, I think we got bring to this big convention and have them, ten years of unicyclers blasting the aisles in that convention center.
Oh, Kinner, good timing, you're up next, wanna get ready?
Okay. Okay, Jason.
Okay. Okay, Jason.
Yeah.
Follow that.
I don't know, it'll be easy cause I don't even know what happened, so.
And that adjusts something down uh on the right, by your right, right there is a switch.
Um so in front of you, it's being passed out is uh the award of excellence. What this is, it's a. New initiative uh in the past three years by the WIAA. Uh it's a promote sportsmanship in the state. It's an extremely comprehensive award, uh which all the check boxes. Uh you can see how it works, so it outlines how how this whole thing works and then all the criteria below apply to the school year. Uh which is just included. So basically for this uh eighteen, nineteen school year, you have to do all of the check items. Uh to just to qualify uh for the award. Uh it's kind of a self-check type thing. So athletic directors are uh responsible for going through the checklist items. You check them at a time and then presenting it to the school board uh for approval. Then basically you submit it to the WIAA, uh and then they look it over and they cross-reference it with. Uh and I'll talk about some of these things. They cross-reference it with the uh ref rankings for uh officials. Uh if they tossed any of your coaches, um rejected any of your coaches and also the NFHS uh Learn Network. So we'll talk about that. So uh presenting this, uh there was only, so they do this presentation at the annual. Meeting, uh which happens in April, uh and we have to, that's part of one of the criteria. We have to attend that meeting. Uh along with regional meetings. Um and at the WIAA annual meeting, they recognize these schools that have met these criteria the. Year before uh in completion. Uh and there at this annual meeting, there's probably less than twelve schools in the state. That were recognized for this award. So I I my first year, when I went to the WIAA annual meeting, I was almost done with my first year and I thought this is, this is something we're doing a lot. Of already, as far as the criteria are concerned. Um there's a few things that we needed to to check off. Um and there's some some vision items on here that uh I want to initiate and lead within our own conference. Which I'll touch on in a second, so. So this, you can read through this comprehensive list. There's a lot of holding meetings that pertain to uh sportsmanship uh and ethics or conduct. Uh that needs to be an item on the agenda. So in in specific, we have Wednesday morning meetings with our entire student body. Where we touch on ethics and character a lot. Um sometimes we have a monthly, sometimes we have more than one Wednesday meeting a month. Uh and in there, we're always talking about uh characteristics of a a person. So empathy, uh we're talking about. Uh how to act appropriately, expectations, uh representation of our school district in multiple settings. Um including within the building and then at events and beyond. Um we're recognizing community members in there for their character. So I had Judge Nelson in there last year uh to present on truancy and character and what it means to be her role as a judge in the community. A lot of kids didn't even know she existed. Uh which is awesome, cause they get to see, oh, we have a judge in here. Um so I mean, those traits, we we brained in bed. With our students. Um and also you look at on here too, as as far as. The adult side. Uh and we started two years ago, head coach DLC, um where we talk about. All this last year was about definition of success. Um and in there, we talk about how we want our athletes. To represent our school and what we are and how we are represented. Um and in every meeting, we've talked about the athletic code. Um and the principles and guiding ethics of that, um and the changes that we need to make, which I'll be bringing to you sometime soon as well. As well as how we are as coaches modeling expectations for our athletes and how those are being translated. So the whole year, a lot of our athletics uh at middle school level, I'll speak for Chance too, cause he's not here, and high school, we've had. Outstanding examples of sportsmanship. Um and I'm sure Pete can chime in here as far as middle school basketball. There was a. There was a student with special needs, I believe, that uh got put into the game and our kids modeled. To others, uh having that kid make a basket. Uh and just cheering them on and like what it means for sport. We got complimented and recognized uh a sportsmanship award in state football, um despite our little penalty at the end. Uh but the last two years, we've been recognized for that. Uh we have a. We have a reputation of winning games, but when we knock the opponent down, we're always helping them up. You'll see that if you watch Hubble. Kids are always helping out the other team. Uh obviously, we sort of touched on to knock them over again, but. Our reputation is we conduct ourselves and we represent the game. We play the game the way it's supposed to be played. We do it in classy fashion. And if you ever wanna experience that, you look at it after an athletic event at the high school, volleyball, basketball, football. Our kids making a tunnel for the athletes. Not only that, but encouraging the other fans of the other team. To make a tunnel for their athletes. Walking off the officials, high-fiving them, encouraging them to go through the tunnel. And a lot of officials don't like to do that or confronted, they're told just to leave the vicinity right away. We've, we've had official crews that go through the tunnel. Our kids accept, like encourage them to go through to get high-fived. That's how it should be, as the sportsmanship is. Again, this is a very comprehensive list. I mean, coaches have to take the NFHS Learn Class. Um that the NFHS Network is is providing a lot of free resources for coaches to um and administrators to learn about different. Areas uh to sport, whether it's, I just, I just did another free one the other day on on vaping and e-cigarettes. So some of the things that are are being put out there about that. It's got reports, it's got um general surgeon reports. Four hundred, six hundred page documents on there is resources for you to go through and figure out stuff. Um it's got little quizzes at the end to make sure you understood, forward chips along the way. It's very comprehensive. Um and part of this is coaches taking the sportsmanship uh Learn Class. Uh we've had. So far, three to four head coaches take the sportsmanship class. They're not super comprehensive, they're pretty quick to do. But you get the point, um in a quick fashion, you understand. Um one thing that I want to start though, um that's different in the middle border than it was in the Dun St. Croix. In the Dun St. Croix, they ran a sportsmanship summit. Um what that is, is every school in the Dun St. Croix would come. Uh they held it usually in Elk Mountain. Um you get a couple of athletes, uh and Nick was a part of that a few times. Uh while he was here, you take some coaches and athletes and you go to this uh sportsmanship summit or banquet. And they have a guest speaker, breakout sessions, you have uh community lunch with each other, athletes from other schools. Um and it would be centered around sportsmanship. Um we don't have that in the middle border. Nor do our A Ds necessarily, and if they listen to this, they think I'm throwing them under the bus. Uh nor do they think that there's a real need. Um for that in our conference, which I completely disagree with, uh wholeheartedly disagree with. So what I'm gonna do, um or what I plan to do in the next year, uh is develop a sportsmanship summit and invite. Schools beyond the middle board conference to attend if they would like. If it's just our kids, we'll start with just our kids. But I want to expand it beyond and hopefully there's some middle board schools that'll jump on and eventually it'll become just like our scull athlete banquet. Where there's a speaker, there's representation, it's meaningful and purposeful, it has a point. It's not just for for fun and giggles. It's, we're teaching our kids how to be leaders. We're teaching them about how to play the game the right way. And we're teaching them how to respect officials. Since there is a sort of shortage, we need to get to a place where fans and athletes. Just respect athletics in general and what that means. What is the purpose of sportsmanship? Cause it just goes beyond just the athlete. Extends to the officials, it extends to the fans, it extends to the parents, it extends to the community, the school. Should be a comprehensive thing, it's how should we should live. So that's my plan and that's my my vision is to start one of those uh for the middle board. So that's going beyond really this, cause it says do a ten, I don't want a ten, give a couple of open ones, I wanna run. So you can check this out, um you can keep that copy if you want, you can solicit it to whoever you want, make flyers, put them in the BP or wherever. Um but this is, it's signed out and I submitted to W the WIA, so we will be recognized at the next annual meeting. Hopefully, we're adding more and more schools in the state as we go. Any questions?
Um, one of the traditions that I appreciated when we were Dun St. Croix was that the bands played the visiting schools. Fight song and we don't do it in middle border and we were told, well, we don't do it in middle border. I I would, I would invite us to consider uh getting the fight songs. If they don't play ours, okay. But I think it's a show of respect and class of the competition. Um and uh to play that other schools one time through first and then we put ours on top of it, of course, but. I I I like that tradition and and I and I think that it lacks a little something with middle border competition, but.
For sure.
One little piece.
I agree. I don't even know if some of those schools know what their fight songs are. They're just like ingrained.
Well, they all seem to play them at, you know, before their games, so.
I know Prescott's, um at Prescott, it wasn't even like written out, it was just by. Passed on. You just learned it and recited it by memory. So I'm sure they didn't have to write it off.
Suggestion not needed.
Yeah, no, and I I agree. I think it's, they did, the whole fan base has stand up and hyper officials comment about. Some of the events we've run for the WIA playoffs where the atmosphere is inviting, it's about competition, but it's it's healthy. Um and both fan bases were respectful and issues were addressed immediately and it made for us a good environment. So gener- I mean, generating that, especially when we get other schools that we don't have. A most solid relationship with or the competition levels up here, like beyond healthy. I think it's an invite to to say, hey, we're recognizing you as well. This is about sport. It's about being together and having a. Healthy competition with each other, believing in that.
I think you hit upon it. Um good sportsmanship um takes intentional leadership. Right, if, we always say what we permit, we promote. And um I I I think you and and our staff and and you've modeled it. And um and our coaches model it. Uh we address poor behavior. Um and we uh reinforce and acknowledge good behavior and um, you know, a little bit of leadership. Like I always say, we got great kids, you know, leaders lead the leaders and and they lead each other. Um and are very creative in a positive way, but um I just wanna applaud you. This list is very comprehensive. I can see why not many people in the state get it. Some of these things are under your control, others are not, but. Uh Jaco Willink would say with extreme ownership, they're all under our control, right? We ultimately own it. If if somebody gets uh ejected from a game, that's, you know, that's ultimately on us, you know? So um congratulations, this this is a big deal. Uh you know, you've hit on it. Um our vision is to win with class. Our mission is to have class, sportsmanship, right? We can do that every time. We're not gonna win every time, but we can have good sportsmanship, good character. And good class. Win with class, lose with class, but either way, it's perspective and it's a healthy competition.
And athletics is a classroom. A coach shouldn't tolerate anything there that they wouldn't in there as a teacher.
Yeah, I mean, I've, you know, I officiate a lot and I see a lot of different experiences. But um oftentimes, the fans feed off the coach's behavior, you know, right? We definitely can control that. We should. Control our student behavior and we can control our adult behavior, which is the most challenging. It is toughest, but you know, we. We are reaching a point in our society, if if it, if it doesn't get, you know, it's about as bad as it's gotten and that's why you see. Official shortages and if you watch any uh professional sporting event, some of these cheers that they're doing now are terrible. I mean, just downright, we wouldn't accept that in any other venue alive, so high school athletics still has that extension in classroom, which. We we love and we support, but it's not easy. Intentional leadership, so.
I would, I would mimic that as getting worse. I mean, when you have horse racing under the microscope or bulls and fishy. It's everything now, you know, so how do we teach our kids to live in that type of system? How do we teach them to lead in that type of system? Never.
I think having that conferences that you said, that you're gonna start, I mean, then that will help that sportsmanship. You know, spread throughout the conference, because you know, competition is good, but not everybody's gonna, you know, someone's gonna win, someone's gonna lose. And and we're not all gonna be professional athletes. It's it's that, it that's the biggest part of sports, is learning that teamwork and sportsmanship.
Yeah, minimum that presents a challenge, presents a challenge to us, presents a challenge to the middle order. To actually look at what are the issues in our habits and address them.
You have those athletes, huh?
And but I I saw students making different choices, routinely better choices and you know, there's a couple cheers that just. I don't, you know, you know. She's a freshman, whatever, doesn't really matter to me, but this uh let's play football because we're losing this game, so let's play football because we won that game. And I I don't recall if it was Somerset or Osceola, even what the game was that we were at, but. Started playing, let's play football, and then they came back with, well, let's play hockey, cause apparently they'd be, well, then it's. Let's play tennis, well, we don't have a tennis team. And so somehow it ended up, and now the kids just started having fun with it. And I think they ended up agreeing to meet at some park at four o'clock to play ta- table tennis and, you know, it was like in that moment. A- all of them just kinda saw where it was going, and then they just turned it into fun and they all made better choices and. And both fan bases responded to it. And so at some point, a seed was planted that someone said. Eh, maybe, okay, we can course correct. And and being good sports isn't sitting on your hands not being involved. It's showing it in a way that actually enlightens itself.
And it's teaching and and there's a lot of, there's a lot of sports that choose to do that when they aren't able to do the cheers they want to do. They'll just sit down and sit on their hands. So a lot of it's teaching. What, you can have fun, but what does that look like?
And I I I watch our students and with the bowling and the race car races and all the fishing and all the crazy stuff they do on that sideline between breaks. They're having fun. I I challenge anyone to say that they're not having fun.
And it takes a leader to lead that. So they really, the student body ebbs and flows, but it takes, it takes a specific person to lead the student section. So if you have a healthy, positive leader, you can have cheers like that. But if you have.
So if you're doing these leadership conferences though, just wondering about the athletes, cause it seems like every sport kinda has the one or two or three kids out front. Get them included.
So we have, right now currently, um we used to several years ago run uh leadership summit in the summer, building everybody that. Um and it was open to all, all athletes, any and even NHS was open to everybody. Uh we've gotten away from that, but we're bringing it back this summer. Um so we'll bring in some speakers, we're getting other people out. But we've had, uh the FFA's done some leadership stuff, uh that's open. Uh we're working on developing a leadership curriculum. Um I brought a lot of couple of leadership things and we're trying to embed it within a health curriculum as well. Um and create margin for a teacher to hopefully actually offer a class of like in leadership. Um so we're trying to find creative ways to do it. Uh some was just a gaming element for kids to show up. Um and I know we're doing it through uh FCA and other platforms as well to really get more kids involved in what leadership is. We have the, we've always had the expectation that they lead and then we have leaders and you've always had leaders. But we've never actually taught them how to lead. So we expect them to lead and we say, you're a leader, but we haven't been teaching them how to lead. So that's what we're getting at in in this leadership course, these summits, is teaching our kids how to be leaders and what it takes to be a leader. And how you actually meet your peers, which is outstanding for high schoolers. Um so that's what we're working on.
Also, it's what makes a good leader versus a leader. My theory on leadership is there's two ways. You can either earn respect or you can command it. If you command it, that never turns out very well.
Not so much.
Awesome, thank you.
Scott, do you have anything on your refrigerator?
Looks like a great program. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the next item is, uh, financial reports, treasure.
Bank account balances as of April thirtieth, twenty nineteen, citizens state checking, one million, two hundred and twenty seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty four dollars and thirty nine cents. Citizens money market, one million, fourteen thousand, twenty four dollars, sixty three cents. Citizens money market fund, forty six, fifty one dollars, eighty two cents. Citizens money market suicide prevention fund, eighteen thousand, one hundred and twenty seven dollars, eighty five cents. American deposit management referendum proceeds, fifty six thousand, two hundred and forty four dollars, twenty eight cents. The total bank account balances up two million, three hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and two dollars and ninety seven cents.
Move to accept. Second. Okay, a motion, David, second, Kirk, to accept treasure's report as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next item is consideration of the consent agenda, which consists of our board meeting minutes, uh, April fifteenth. Board learning, special meeting minutes of May sixth. Uh, approval of the bi-monthly bills for May, approval of resignations, retirement of Alyssa Fritchie, elementary, uh, student council mentor, uh, Dwayne Jardines is middle school basketball coach, approval of appointments and contract modifications. Alyssa Fritchie is a middle school student council coordinator. Emily Weck is a middle school volleyball coach, Chris Jardine is a middle school boys' basketball coach. Justin Yaren, a full-time high school math teacher. Randy Jordan has varsity head basket, boys' basketball coach. Do I have a motion? A quick acceptance presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, David, second, Scott, to accept the, uh, consent agenda as presented. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. And we'll move on to the next item, which is our student enrollment update.
To one thousand, six hundred and ten students in seats, uh, which is down two from last month, but still up twelve from third Friday and September count. Um, and our free introduced lunch rate is creeping up to twenty percent, near twenty percent, it's at nineteen point two six. And, uh, down in the lower right-hand column, just wanna point out, we're at, uh, one hundred and fifty-three open enrolled virtual charter school students. Add that to our in district virtuals, full-time students, twenty-five, that's one hundred and seventy-eight full-time virtual students in addition, uh, to the seventy-one, uh, part-time in district students. Um, also, we have one hundred and three open enrolled students in seats. Add that together, we have two hundred and fifty-six open enrolled in students total, one oh nine out, for net difference of one hundred and forty-seven to the positive.
Questions with regards to the, uh, student enrollment? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to the next item, which is our student staff and community recognition.
Uh, we have a few this month, uh, the first one is to, uh, Jacob Egan, it's a recognition, congratulations, Jacob, on achieving the rank of Eagle Scout, a job well done. The second one is recognition to Isaiah Casey, Spartan Nash recently selected as Special Olympics Healthy Athletes, whose healthy lifestyles and involvement in the Special Olympics embody the organization's oath. Let me win, but if I cannot win, let me be brave in my, in the attempt. In Wisconsin, the healthy athlete is Isaiah Casey, who attends St. Chris Central Middle School in Lyman Roberts. He also participates in many five K running events and bikes with his family to stay in shape. Casey has been involved with Special Olympics for six years, participates in team basketball and track and field. He's known for his positive energy and great sportsmanship, all the traits of a Spartan Nash healthy athlete, so congratulations and, uh, from the board on those two recognitions this month.
Just to jump in real quick, um, Isaiah Kasey. Um, if you've been in any of Family Fresh restaurants, he's got about a six-foot picture of himself on there, he's on all the water bottles. Um, and, uh, Isaiah was the one individual that Mr. Kully was talking about, that, um, played on the eighth grade basketball team, he's just, um, fought through so much and, and this is, this is a big deal, I mean, he's, this is not just state, I mean, these bottles are, but, yeah, so if you see his picture in the Family Fresh, you, you know, that's innate. Just did a big newspaper article on, on that also in Richmond News last week. So it's a great deal, and it's, uh, it, uh, Pat's sitting over there, um, but he's a result of all Pat's hard work in the last, how many years of inclusion? And getting these kids, um, feeling like there's somebody, um, he's just flourished. It's amazing story.
Other questions? Okay, uh, hearing none, and, uh, the next item on the agenda is consideration of approval of the increasing substitute pay rates starting July first of two thousand and nineteen.
Do you wanna start us off or?
Um, sure, so, um, this has been an ongoing discussion, I think, at admin and board level. And, um, it's that time of year to start looking at next year's budget, so it's timely to, um, act upon it. So, um, you can see there's some, there's a data there on your exhibit showing, uh, area schools from Amory down to, you see, uh, Elmwood, um, and what they pay for substitute rates. Uh, the average of all of them, um, is one hundred eleven, we're currently at one hundred, as you can see. We're gonna, uh, ask to, for approval, consideration of approval, to increase that to one hundred and twenty today, per day for teacher subs. And additionally, from ten fifty for support staffs, uh, to twelve dollars per hour. Jen has done the spreadsheet there, showing, um, the costing, um, based on, I believe, this year's, was it?
This is an average of the last two years of subs that have gone through our AESOP system. So this isn't all of our subs, but it's a large majority of them. So you can see, according to this, it's about seventeen thousand dollars extra to increase to the hundred and twenty dollars a day for teachers and twelve dollars for support staff. In our preliminary budget that we looked at back in March, we did include, I think it was twenty-two thousand, um, for an increase in subpay for next year as a part of that budget.
Could it be about that if the numbers stayed the same?
Right.
So the only question, I guess, um, this is just if you did a, a full day sub, right? I mean, if, if I'm a teacher subbing in a teacher's room for one hour, that rate doesn't change.
Correct.
Our hopes is that it will help with the sub shortage, it won't cure it, but it will help.
Okay, are there any questions or comments?
So basically, we have this increase, but a larger increase baked into next year's budget.
Correct.
I was in that two thousand.
Yep, twenty-two versus seventeen.
Yes.
Right. Pat, do you have a feeling for the, the special para's subs, especially the, for the real high needs? Is this part of the answer for that, or is?
I'm hoping.
Yeah?
I'm definitely hoping so.
Do you hear feedback about it at all or about, okay.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments with regards to the increase in wages? As I would entertain a motion.
Just like, so where are we at on our reduced by twenty percent progress?
We're on track to do that, to reach that, um, uh, we've, out of our eight months so far, um, as compared to last year, we're, we're, um, down in terms of subs needed in five of the eight months. Now, the caveat, I got a, the asterisk is we missed eight days of school, cause of inclement weather. That doesn't hurt, right? Um, but, uh, our goal five years ago was to reduce by twenty percent, and we've, uh, increased steadily starting with fourteen and, uh, each year, and, um, if we come in, uh, twenty percent in the month of, uh, May, again, will be twenty percent, uh, less subs as compared to two thousand and fourteen, um, for the year.
So what's the next call?
Yet to be determined. Have, have everybody show up every day?
Well, I mean, we know that, that's unreasonable, but there are, uh, how, how many, um, if, if you do, how many staff days, like in, I'm looking at, uh, April, I'm looking at February, right? So you need a hundred and thirty-four staff days of subs in February. We have two, a hundred and eighty-sevens, how many, how many teacher and para staff do we have?
Just shy of two fifty, like two forty-eight.
That, I thought that was all district.
Oh, it is, oh, just para and teachers?
Yeah.
We're at a hundred and tw- eighteen, a hundred and twenty teachers?
Yeah, we're like one twenty-five.
One twenty-five and fifty-ish paras?
Okay, so if you're at one seventy-five and you call it twenty-one days in a month, you, you staff thirty-six hundred positions, thirty-six seventy-five positions a month. I, you know, I, I don't know what that, uh, we can do the math, but that just seems like a lot of, lot of positions that we're filling every month.
I can tell you that, yeah, the number of subs needed have ranged per month in AESOP from sixty-one for a low to, uh, two hundred and twenty-eight for a high. The average has been one thousand, four hundred to one thousand, three hundred, down to one thousand, two hundred to eleven hundred, um, for the year. That's just AESOP.
It looks like it's about three and a half percent, I don't, I don't know if that's good or bad, it's, and that's just pick in February. And there's months that are lower than that, but.
Would that be a high month for sicknesses?
Your attendance rate is ninety-six percent.
Okay, so there is four percent. All right, I would, I would encourage administration to keep looking at, um, creative and productive ways, healthy ways to keep reducing, uh, the need for substitutes. Because you're paying twice, right?
Yeah, life happens.
I, I get it, I don't mean four percent's good or not.
It's, well, and some of it, we could further distill it out to, uh, which ones are subs because you're in regional wrestling, or you made this, um, forensic event, or whatever it is, you know? So if we took those out as desirable sub days, cause you're, you, you're doing something that you wanna be doing, and you have to have a sub for it, then what are the numbers, you know, so I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know if it's good or bad, but.
I've had a consistent message that attendance is, you know, the foundation of, of successful, you know, education, right? Um, um, but, you know, have a caveat of acknowledging, you know, there's been some feedback through honest conversations that, you know, there's a lot of pressure on us to be here, so, or that, I think we found a happy medium. I, I think that's a good thing to have pressure to be here, I mean, yeah, we wanna be, lean towards being motivated when there's that discretionary.
As long as the pressure to be here isn't come when you're sick.
Yeah.
Or, you know, I mean.
People get sick, that's the one thing.
Right.
We, we encourage you not, you know, to, to, to try to schedule appointments after school hours, we, we've really cut down on the number of folks we send to C cent during the day, et cetera. Try to be creative with the athletic schedules, but not leaving sorely for golf, et cetera, but that's dependent on the conference and other schools. Uh, you know, we, we did the perfect attendance incentives through our Alon School Charge Card, which we get free through our reward system. Uh, we give out three fifty-dollar gift cards every month in a raffle for those, uh, by building, uh, for perfect attendance. Certainly helps rewards, but, yeah, it's, I've been consistent with the message that, that, but you're the best person for the job. Soon as you are out of your position, the best sub in the world, the level of education's gonna drop. Just cause you were the best person for the job, you beat out in other, in some cases, one hundred other people. Um, and we want you there as much as possible, always. I don't know.
And that's what I feel that I guess is that there, there should be expected pressure to be at work. Not unhealthy pressure, but you should be expected to be at work, unless you're ill, there's an emergency, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, we have a hundred and.
There's nothing wrong with expecting people to be at work.
We have a hundred and seventy-four days of student learning days, um, and, and you take, you throw in all the, all the other things that can happen, and it's even less. So our time together is really valuable, try to keep that message. Employee engagement is a huge piece, right, it's, it's like, you want, so you want all the employees to want to come to work and thoroughly enjoy being at work. That helps too, that's, that's an incentive, more than salary research shows, um, those, those factors, so. Yeah, and, you know, just that, what we, what measure, measure matters, you know, and what matters we should measure, so that's, I started tracking this back in two thousand thirteen, fourteen right away, and, um, trying to share it and celebrate it and encourage it.
Okay.
Thanks, this is, this increasing the submarine is another thing that can, can help, cause it's not good when you can't fill positions, it's, puts a real stress on, on the educational day.
Seems like they all happen at once too, doesn't it?
Yeah, Fridays are very common for whatever it is, workshops and, you know, personal days or vacations or whatever, and, but yeah, it's, and then sicknesses.
Right, and it's obvious that the teachers care, wanna be there, because when, when Kelly gets called for subbing, a lot of times she gets called by the teacher before it's posted, can you sub? I can't, uh, I don't, and they might, like, go in with a bad back that they shouldn't be in there with, or kind of sick, you know, whatever kind of sick is. Um, but they care, you, you see it, I see it pretty regularly from her's perspective, that if they don't get the sub they want even, you know, then they, I mean, there's, there's this short list of people that, oh, okay, I'll figure out a way of being there.
It's more work for most educators to be gone, to do all the lesson planning, you've gotta spell out everything, and then when you get back, you've gotta pick up, you know, the, the pieces that were dropped unintentionally or whatever, but, um, yeah, it's definitely easier to be there. And, and like you said, those, the people that are hard for the job, at eighty percent, you know, are still better, just cause of the relationships, the familiarity, the efficiency, the knowledge, et cetera.
Thanks.
So do we have a motion? Forward to increase the substitute pay rates starting.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, uh, Scott, second, Tricia. Approve increasing the substitute pay rates starting July first of two thousand and nineteen. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carries. Uh, moving on to the next item, consideration of recommended lunch prices for two thousand nineteen, twenty.
We should have an exhibit, um, for the, all the student fees, the lunch prices are at the top. We are recommending no change in lunch or breakfast prices for two twenty nineteen, twenty. Um, as you know, after our food service audit, we had a large, uh, fund balance that they want us to spend down, and so we have been given an exception, uh, for next year, that we do not have to increase lunch prices. So otherwise, according to the price equity calculator, we would have to increase five cents a meal, but they have given us an exception for that. So no increase.
Okay, that's good, so with that, then I don't think there's, it's necessary to have a motion and to approve on, on increase, so. Okay, any questions with the lunch fees? Okay, then we'll move on to the next one is consideration of recommended student fees for two thousand nineteen, twenty school year.
So that is the, the rest of the document, um, there again, were no changes. So that is the, the rest of the document, um, there again were no changes in recommended fees for next year. As far as class fees or anything that's being charged to the kids at the building level. Um, no, no change to the activity tickets or the athletic fees either.
So, do, do we need a annual review of this? I mean, Howard, do you want a motion that just says we accept the fee table as presented?
We can.
Cause then there's just no question as to whether or not we reviewed it.
Okay, that's fine.
I'll make a motion that we accept the fee table as presented.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, John, second. Scott, accept the fee tables as presented. Further discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next item is appointment of a district representative to the WASB Legislative Delegate Assembly. This would be for the assembly in January if I.
I nominate Howard Kushner. Jeff's been doing it, right? Does he wanna continue? He's had the last two years.
Yeah, and I may be available next year, so.
Howard's done it himself.
Open, no, Howard's out.
Should we?
Howard dropped. So Jeff, I think Jeff has to go this year.
Oh, yeah, cause he's on.
Nominating or his uh policy, whatever.
Yeah.
Uh, committee assignment, so I would suggest that we recommend Jeff. Since he asked.
Did you make a motion?
That a motion. That's a motion.
I'll say.
Okay.
Besides, he's not here himself. Forward my fight.
Fight, do, do I accept it or not?
No, I'm not accepted.
Yeah, it's uh, been to enough of them to know that it's not one of my. Everybody needs to do it at least once, just for the experience. Okay, we have a motion on the floor, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is to designate Assistant State Bank Roberts as the official depository for St. Craig Central School District.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion Scott, second John. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, opposed? Okay, uh, motion carries. Uh, next item, designate in Richmond News as the official newspaper for St. Craig Central School District.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion Kirk, second John, designate in Richmond News as the official newspaper for St. Craig Central School District. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, the next is selection of board members to serve on committees. Uh, I guess my recommendation would be to maintain the membership of the committees, which are mainly the uh support staff negotiation. And the teacher negotiating committees.
And communication.
And communication, which in benefit.
Yes, and if that's acceptable to the board, um, I would like to maintain those committees.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next item is proposed board meeting uh dates for two thousand nineteen twenty. Discuss this with Pam. There are only two changes, and there were similar changes to last year's. Uh, mainly the board learning meeting in September be moved to the second Monday of the month. Uh, because of Labor Day and uh September twenty-third would be the fourth Monday for the regular board meeting. Uh, and then again in January, uh, we move uh board learning to January thirteenth. With the uh regular board meeting held on the twenty-seventh.
And then the December one.
And the December one is only one meeting, which would be the second Monday.
It used to be for holiday concerts, but it's more now just because it's such a short month. Um, also known, you know, Jason Chance and administration works hard, more intentional every year to try to avoid concerts. And athletic events, you know, as much as possible on board meeting nights, not to put us, you know, uh. Parents in the situation where you gotta choose one or the other, so in addition to overflow parking and, and and the problems those present, but just know that we're. We're intentional with that and trying to get better every year, improve on.
Okay, so if this is acceptable, I would entertain a motion to.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, have a motion, John, second David, to accept the proposed board meeting minutes, or board meeting dates. For the two thousand nineteen twenties uh year, school year. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is our update. Our Wisconsin safety grant.
So I passed around just uh the budget summary from each of the grants, so if you recall, the Department of Justice um. Released one hundred million in funds last spring, um, admittedly, you know, a political move, but it's good that we were able to benefit from that. Um, the first round, uh brainstorming, we came up with thirty-one thousand five hundred twenty-six uh dollars, uh received all of them. Um, so you see a camera system for our turn, alternative school, which um potentially could be in the basement here, so that's um really for our district office. Uh, we got camera system in here now. Uh, panic buttons for the school offices, we have yet uh to um get them installed, that's the only thing. Two-way handheld radios, we ordered a bunch more, uh, and this was in June. Uh, upgraded the DVRs to middle schools, so now all, all um of the DVRs are the same system, actually NVR, network video recorders. Um, all interactive, all accessible, uh web-based remotely, et cetera, so our camera system is top-notch. Um, window film, so the uh, the shatter resistant, people falsely call it bulletproof. It's not bulletproof, shatter resistant, uh makes it much harder for whether a bullet, a baseball bat, or whatever, to get through in all of our uh entrances. In all of our schools, um, and here at the district office, so that's installed, it's a three M product. Again, the adhesive is what really makes that good, cause it bonds to the frame, um, you know, makes it really tough to get through. So that was round one, uh, if you look on the back then, um, we uh. Round two, had many more ideas when I found out, um, uh, we'll get to that. So the elementary entrance security window is just installed actually in Friday. Um, and uh, if you bend into the elementary, it's, it's not safe. It's a real um, real gap in our security where a, a potential intruder could get through. It's low, it uh, could get right into the office, and once you get into the office, you have access to the rest of the school. It would defeat our purpose of uh having those uh entrance, second entrance and the foyer doors um secure, so. That's done um as of Friday, which is great, uh, for less than that actually. Exterior doors are a huge um budget item, uh, you can see sixty thousand dollars almost, uh, which is wonderful that um. The grant to our surprise allowed that, so those are currently being installed actually, they were waiting for a little nicer weather. You may have noticed them at the middle school near the playground and gym area last week, so. Lots and lots of metal exterior doors and door frames, some of them are rusted out, the closures are poor. Some doors weren't closing properly, and that's hence the security. First um barrier of security is our building envelope, so um, so that's good, that's kind of a twofold thing, that's maintenance, obviously. Um, that's a big maintenance cost, so um, we won't have to replace some, our exterior doors for quite a while. Um, so another thing is you'll notice uh monitors, wall mounts, cables, all the software and and hardware that goes with running. Um, keeping, you see these large televisions this size, we have some in the district office, my office, which would be the command center. Um, uh, the command center would be the, the conference room here has one, it's uh wired up in all the offices, this, the main offices. The administrators' offices, where they're able to just run all the cameras, and and like here at the district office, all of them are rotating. Um, real-time live, um, so they're monitored, so they're, they're functional in that, you know, the secretaries can look up and see. What's going on, the administrators can look up and see what's going on in real time, even if they're just looking for somebody. You know, where's so-and-so, and maybe they, they don't have the radio on, they're able to find them and see what's going on and really keep an eye, so that's a good security upgrade as well. Um, more security cameras, those eleven thousand six hundred dollars were all at the high school actually, um, added there. We've got every need and uh covered with our security cameras district-wide, and even more two-way hand, handheld radios, they're really good ones. Um, they actually have to have an FCC license, or FM, carry along ways, I think I've heard stories of, you can hear. The elementary, when they're on the playground, you can pick up what's going on at the, at the high school, so they're good. Uh, we didn't need to get a repeater, uh, that would be another option as well. So uh, you see about a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars uh worth of security upgrades. Um, that's the DOJ grant, uh, I, I can't say enough, it was fairly easy. It's easy, but it was user-friendly, I mean, I, I wrote it, um, Jen's monitoring, doing fiscal reporting. Um, that's set up, I, I, it seems to be fairly user-friendly and easy and not cumbersome, as opposed to some grants, so um. Um, so overall, I, I, uh, it's got a good review from me, um, and, and uh our safeties upgraded to between a hundred and twenty thousand dollars that we didn't have to find in our budget. Uh, that's the DOJ, additionally, we've been working with Dave Skinner and ACG, Dave uh has a company called ACG on River Falls. He's got a quite an extensive background, um, uh, got to know him, developed a relationship, he's worked for Homeland Security, he was in charge of the entire. Minneapolis airport uh security, um, uh, he's, he's done a lot of things all over the nation, worked with many different businesses, some he can comment and some he can't, obviously, but. Um, approached me about some things, he started first about doing a security risk assessment, do a physical assessment of our buildings, and I'm like. Ah, I wish I would've met you two months ago when this DOJ grant, we're looking for things to write for. Um, so he gave us a proposal for doing a full, it's like a very, very, very comprehensive security audit. Um, and when it's all done, he'll have sixty pages worth of reports and things, find our weaknesses, our gaps, our, our risks. And uh work with us to mediate that, um, he has a proposal for each building, we started at the high school last week. Um, figured the high school was the largest, probably the, in my opinion, the, you know, the most um susceptible, cause it's the busiest, the most events. And et cetera, and studies show. Anyway, uh, so we're starting with that, and then we'll move on to the other schools next year if we get uh this grant. We're able to do the high school through this year's budget, um, but I wrote a sixty-three thousand dollar grant with Wisconsin Emergency Management and FEMA. Wisconsin Emergency Management passes on to FEMA, so with that, um, paid for eighteen thousand dollars, which would be the, the full physical risk assessment. For all three buildings and the district office, I wrote for that, thirteen thousand for cybersecurity, Chad Concelli got a. Uh, quote to do a cybersecurity risk assessment and uh test our system. And then a thirty-two thousand dollars worth of uh emergency alert system, which I could get into, but. Um, really, really neat stuff that a Navy SEAL developed out of, uh, for Parkland. But that thirty-two would, uh, is a little on the high end, he thought maybe, just to be safe, cause we were short in time, um, that would be just the high school. Right now, so sixty-three thousand dollars there. Now, the nice thing is Dave comes, you know, to us and says here, but he also, um, you know, is tied into a lot of different trainings and people, and he alerted me of this grant. That I would not have known otherwise, and it's not very well-known. He's like, yeah, he has a meeting with the school, and I told so-and-so, I'm like, shh, quit telling so many people about this, come on.
Tell them it for weekend hours.
Yeah, right, so, um, anyway, uh, good guy, yeah, we were meeting with uh Chief Coltrane, set up next, just wants to talk, you know, and develop a relationship. With uh security in the high school, et cetera, et cetera, so, uh, we'll know in about a month whether we get that sixty-three thousand dollar grant turned on.
Well, the cybersecurity thing, I guess I was amazed when we were discussing that with uh this R E M. R M M uh computer systems that CISA is using, of all the security stuff that they're having to go through now with. Double authentication and now they're, they're getting away from the Norton-based signature. Antivirus phishing things, and they find it, something that's much more uh dynamic in nature, which they're. They've got uh algorithms now that are going through and picking out different. Not only signatures, but uh characteristics, programs that would lead to uh phishing or viruses. Isolating those now, so it's got. Yeah, that's it, when it gets more complicated, price goes up too. So.
Tell me why not?
You seen that at Wells Park?
Every day.
So, that sounds like a good thing then, and uh. Other, other than the panic buttons, we've got everything else uh completed with the grants.
Door hardware is.
Um, in progress.
Be a little while again before it's fully complete, but yeah.
Okay, are there any questions with regards to the uh safety nets? Okay, hearing none, then we'll move on to the next item, which is extracurricular assignments review.
Oh, two things for you. One is a refresher on what the activities pay model is currently, and then the next uh is my portion and the chance. Um, to talk about your destination imagination, I don't know how much I can even answer about that, except they're doing incredible job. The spreadsheet that they uh provided, the chance provided, uh, is a breakdown of hours. Um, of some of the things that do with the staff. Um, so proposal, and this is the only proposal, there's no additional protein positions uh being recommended for next year from middle school or high school at this time. Uh, we do have some sponsors still, still, but um, the only proposal on the board for nineteen twenty uh is the. Redistribution of the robotics position into a destination imagination coordinator. Uh, so it's just a twelve hundred dollars title change, uh, and then an additional twelve hundred dollars. Um, for two six hundred dollar positions in the mentor bucket, uh, for DI coaches, which one would be at each building. So you'd have the coordinator position for twelve hundred, and then you'd have uh two six hundred positions, one at the middle school and one at elementary.
Is, is the robotics program going away then, or are we just putting a different name?
It's on hold, we've tried for two years to find a replacement for Garrett Wendell, um, including reaching out to UW River Falls. Um, and there's nobody that's gonna really take it. So any community member that were volunteers or time with zero robotics experience, uh, we're just letting the kids get in there and get messy. Uh, but Garrett didn't really want to do that, because there's a large investment in the robotics, according to them to have right now. So right now, I mean, we've searched for two years of trying to find a qualified person that could lead that, um, with very little success, so. The proposal is to replace the robotics with the DI position right now, um, but then when we find a suitable robotics person to take that program, or Garrett's in a position to be. Started, um, we have the equipment already, um, we just have a fourth proposal to re-add that position. Or you can put it in addition to whoever you want to import that and go and keep their replacements.
DI is a elementary middle school? It's, it does it go any higher?
It, it typically doesn't go beyond eighth grade, but there are, they're, they're starting to dabble now, I know, because of the numbers are growing. Then Carrie was talking, there were eight or ten high school teams in the last one, not very widespread.
And how, how old do they have to be at the elementary level, do you know? Is there like a, like a maybe a second grade starting or, you know, okay, cause it's pretty new.
I don't remember, I know that the plan would be fourth grade.
Okay.
For sure.
Okay.
From what I know, it's will be a, like, a rapidly growing activity.
It, yeah, I'd heard of it, yeah, it's, it's.
Yeah, it's taking off big time.
It's big other places, and so, yeah, it's just gonna keep going. It's big other places, and so, yeah, it's just gonna keep going.
The only other proposal that would come forth was a late proposal from our elementary play, uh, director. Um, but we haven't quite added that yet. Um, some of the initial thoughts, uh, were that they have a high school play director or the elementary school play director. And that they have two positions in the mentor section for a hundred kids, so three people for a hundred students. Um, and they're looking at a proposal to equal the ratios of twenty-five to one. Um, so I, we don't have enough information, because it was just, the proposal was just given last week. Um, just to give you a heads up, but that's something we're looking at, is adding those elementary play numbers and how it functions and how many people they need to run effectively. So I don't, I can't afford that right now. Yes, you need a lot of the over, uh, middle school.
For that many young ones.
So I'm not pretty forward, we're both for that yet, uh, but that is on the forefront, we'll dig into that a little more.
Okay, that's next.
At this point, we need approval to add the DI positions, or the next step would be to post and then to hire.
Correct.
So moved.
Okay, you have your second.
Second.
I have a motion, John, second. David, authorize, uh, a position for Destination Imagination Coordinator. I think your timing was very good to come and ask, cause this happened in the presentation today.
Specific DI positions are?
One coordinator.
For twelve hundred.
One ES mentor and one MS mentor.
Correct.
For six hundred each.
We could do all that in one motion.
And we're using, we're using, and there's twenty-four hundred dollars in robotics to fund that?
There's, there's, so there, I mean, I've already talked with Jen about this, there'd be an offset, uh, so the total package is twenty-four hundred dollars. But with the replacement of the robotic position, that cuts that in half. So it'd be an addition, an additional twelve hundred dollars.
And so we're using twelve hundred from robotics plus twelve hundred from new money.
Correct.
To fund this. And should we find a robotics, we have to come back and approve the, the twelve hundred and another twelve hundred again. Okay?
Okay.
So moved.
Okay, so that's your motion, that's second, David.
Yep.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
In general, have you gotten good feedback in how this model is working, Jason, or?
Yeah, yeah, I think it's.
Has it stabilized?
It's stabilized, I think it's more of ebbs and flows of growth and I, I think we've whittled down the positions that were non-existent, were not filled for years and years and years. So it's very, it's clear now, it's defined, it's active, so those are the things we're, we're doing, all that stuff.
And has this stabilized in your budgeting then, as well? I mean, because now this built in differently than what they were.
Right, so it is a little bit different, but, yeah, we, we just use that and go through it each year. And that's how I base our, you know, budget on that I'm working on now for next year, so we make sure that we have it fully funded.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Okay, uh, as far as other business, do we have any other business, uh, that needs to come before the board?
Jason, did you see the update, or can I brag a little bit?
I have not seen it.
About what happened at track and field tonight?
No, I've not heard anything.
Just, uh, for the benefit of the board.
Do we, when we do?
Boys and girls both won regents.
Really? Even the boys?
Nice. Boys won by three and a half points, girls won by eight points.
So a conference, we held conference last week, girls took second in conference, and boys took fifth.
But, but we take out, we take out, we take out New Richmond, so, but, um.
So we want a bloomer, uh, for regionals, so.
Yeah.
Still pretty good.
And, uh, there's some good performance from some of the younger athletes.
Awesome.
Uh, Logan Napton, one shot put by two inches over Joe.
That's cause of me.
Which is cool.
It's cause I gave him an oxygenated glove.
Yeah, so, anyway. So that's pretty, that's pretty cool.
It's all takes? It's all takes. It's past the magic.
Yeah, that's great news. How many do we have going in sections?
A bunch, I mean, I, I stopped to come on. Well, will our team go now to se- our team will go as a whole team to section, cause it's Thursday.
Correct, so they'll qualify for sectional, so they're, they're going to Mozenee on Thursday.
But the whole team will go.
So a lot of those, and a lot of those, a lot of those athletes just took AP tests this morning, so we had to finish up the bus time a little bit. They literally went from AP testing straight onto the bus to go to the test.
Oh, yeah, it's AP test Thursday, too.
Yeah, so that's gonna be a little more difficult.
We got snow days.
Two hours and.
Two and a half hours.
Yeah.
And so they'll finish the test on the bus, one every day.
I was gonna say, add a school bus, two and a half.
On two buses.
School bus, two and a half, usually.
Which normally doesn't happen, they were pushed back AP test because of the inclement weather days and it's, it's a snowball effect.
It's more, more hurdles to cross.
Well, that's great news.
Literally, snowball.
Pretty exciting.
Okay, is there any other, uh, news? Okay, uh, not hearing any other news. Important upcoming dates, we have graduation this Friday, seven thirty. Uh, we have our presenters, uh, with diplomas, I think you all know who we are.
I hope you know who you are.
Uh, June third, we will have a wage and benefit committee meeting, uh, work session here at the district office. June third, we have a board learning and special meeting at six thirty here. I will be absent from that meeting, uh, probably attending the CISA meeting in Turtle Lake, if at all possible. If not, I'll call ahead and find someone. I plan on being there, I'll find out tomorrow. Okay, uh, June seventh is our last day of school, June tenth is our first day of summer school. June seventeenth is our next, uh, SEC board meeting at seven o'clock here at the district office.
And we're having a communication meeting that night at, at six, right?
Which one, June seventeenth?
June seventeenth.
Okay, are there any other important dates that we, uh, forgot? Okay, with that, then I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session for Wisconsin State Statute nineteen eighty-five one F. Considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons. Preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems or investigation of charges against specific persons, except for paragraph B applies, which if discussed in public would likely have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations. This has to do with open enrollment applications, so.
Second.
I don't know.
Okay.
Who's, who's so moved?
David.
David Scott.
Okay, roll call.
Aye.
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 Second.